Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start Policy Committee. It is six o'clock. Alright, so this policy, thirty-five hundred, we had some feedback on, and we went through that feedback. We had question on the fact that parents would be notified, and the clarification came from Lynn, that it's within twenty-four hours that the staff would need to notify parents if they noticed a change in the students, or if they had information about the students' mental health. Hey, come on in. How are you, Piper?
Good, how are you?
Good. It's good to see you. Have a seat. Okay, so-
What was your name?
Piper.
Piper, name? Good to meet you.
And this is Olivia.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, so we are going to, um, we just started. Um, this policy is students' physical health screenings and examinations, and we did this policy, we revamped it a few weeks back, sent it out for public comment, and then, um, it came back in because there was a question over here. So we resolved that question, and now we can send this one to the board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and fix out another one. Which next would be... So the safety busing, is that still on hold?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then the use of restraint, seclusion, and aversion for students.
We did go over that one.
We do.
Do we have feedback on that?
We do. Okay. By chance, did we print this out?
Yeah.
Okay, yay.
I'm sorry, they're beady-beady, and I don't know how to fix it.
I don't either, I'm not a Google guru. Whoa. Oh, good heaven.
Well, Lisa's-
Lithe magifier?
I'm young, I can read it.
You're one of the lucky ones.
Thank you, laser surgery.
Student, oh, this is student help, okay. Oh, I think, is this what we looked up the last time?
Yeah, this is it.
Okay.
You didn't need to work your last name.
I remember it's like the-
Yeah, 'cause we resolved the one credit issue. Okay, so... Okay, I would assume that students can still be removed from the classroom as long as they are not alone. They're allowed to remain in the classroom. They are allowed to be in disruption to the learning environment. Okay. So then let's go here. Pull up the policy for thirty-three forty-five. Alright, so we gave all of the definitions. And big blank space. Conduct of employees.
It was really just the one color material.
Right. Okay. So look at it. First techniques with any student. Okay. And this one didn't go to the board already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My policies included.
Oh, and I think we had question about why...
And that at the meeting on August twenty-third-
Yeah.
-we were questioning if we wanted to keep the procedure of it.
Okay, 'cause that's... Okay. S- okay.
Yeah. It's very wordy.
It's a big wordy thing, and it's not really procedure, it's more of a sentiment.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But Ramona had brought up the fact that with respect to procedure, there's concern about how long, because already, you know, there's been concern about, you know, putting students in a room by themselves with the door locked for
A long time.
Hours.
Right.
Yeah, and that's not, that should never happen. Um, because over here, it doesn't address that. It just states that our staff will be trained in the CPI program. So what I'm wondering is-
Thank you.
Because the procedures, we have purpose, authorized use, and then cordillains, Chris P., 'cause they created a P. They give stock protocol documentation, which we address in ours. Training.
This actually doesn't look too bad.
Designated locations. Okay, so-
Certainly looks better than, uh, the prior one.
Yeah, that is just a long dosy doubt words that, you know. And it goes through, what is it? Physical restraint.
Do they define substantial risk? Seclusion or serious?
Which we took the definition from statute, because it, you know-
That's more legally-
Yeah. Oh, I don't think we have substantial risk, do we? No, we just have, we have imminent danger, 'cause the statute talks about imminent danger.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think legal definition is better.
Yeah. Okay, so I really don't want this thing to go back. But maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Is, is there anything we want to keep from the prior one? I think using cordillains as the template.
Well, the documentation portion is included, get off of that thing, over here.
Right in the, in the norm.
Right, conduct of employees towards students. Um, I think... See, it says, "Seclusion or restraint shall be immediately terminated when it is determined the student is no longer in immediate danger to him or herself, or to any other individual." Which would seem clear-
Yep.
But I don't know how students can be locked up in rooms for hours. That just doesn't-
I mean, they clearly can't according to policy now.
Okay.
I could just double check it.
Okay, 'cause the way everyone's, every incident is supposed to be documented is here. Students' conduct is placed in imminent danger, and a properly trained district employee, which they're all supposed to be properly trained, so I don't know why they say that.
The other's kind of an exception in the seclusion definition, but it does specify an unlocked setting.
Okay.
Which implies to some extent that it's not involun- involuntary.
Hi.
This is just for the Policy Committee.
Yeah, come on in.
It looked closed out there.
Hi. Come on in. Can I ask your name?
Yvonne.
Hi, Yvonne. I'm Michelle.
I'm Bate.
Olivia.
And Piper.
And Piper. Thank you for coming.
So what was Ramona's reason for keeping the P? 'Cause I remember at the end of the last meeting, we were like, get rid of the P.
Yeah.
Everything was included.
It wasn't, she wasn't like on board to keep it at all, because it wasn't. She's the one that actually found cordillains, and like, well, theirs is kind of more descriptive, but what's on theirs is actually in our policy.
Right.
So I guess the concern is, is do we need a P?
I, I don't see a reason
Okay.
to continue having it. Um, I guess my opinion hasn't changed since the last time we went over. But, I mean, someone else wants to keep it.
As part of the training and preparation, the following shell cur. Training personnel on de-escalation of student crisis situations, positive behavioral intervention techniques and supports. Training personnel in the Crisis Prevention Institute program. That's all we're doing.
Right.
'Cause everything else has been lined out.
Right.
That's kind of funny.
Break me so-
Yeah. What do they have over here for training? Training proper, as to proper situations and events leading to student seclusion and intervention, including possible preventative alternatives to seclusion and restraint, such as recognizing the early signs that an individual may be headed for a crisis and intervening early, safe physical escort, verbal de-escalation of student crisis situation, and positive behavioral intervention techniques and support. Well, okay, kind of like that. 'Cause basically they're saying, don't just jump to locking the kiddo up.
Right.
Let's try some other methods before we have to resort to other. Training of personnel in crisis development behavioral levels, and the appropriate response to each training, including emergencies which may occur in school setting, including examples and demonstrations of proper activities and techniques, and trainers observing employee use of proper activities and techniques in the training setting. I don't know that we do that. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the CPI training involves. I just know that everybody's supposed to have it, I think. Training includes safety techniques to limit the possibility of injury to a student, employee, and any third party in the area. Yeah. Training team, including site-specific training on seclusion areas and restraint techniques. I guess we need to find out if the district wants to implement any of these additional trainings. Or if they are already inclusive of what we're doing, it's just not delineated. Because I think it's more important to have more information. Like, yeah, we should be doing ongoing training, it shouldn't be just a one and done. Training will be placed in the, and yeah, do we document that they've been trained? It would be good to know.
I feel like it has to be documented. Like whatever Adrian's who conducts the training.
We would think.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, I guess. Maybe it's re-specified that it has to be, 'cause-
Yeah, designated locations. Shall include an adult in the seclusion location who has continuous visual observation of this. That I like. But then again, I don't know, because I don't know that all kiddos would react positively or favorably if they knew somebody was watching. But
I, I think-
you can't just lock the kid in the room and walk away.
Yeah, I think the visual observation is important.
Okay.
'Cause, yeah, if they do do something crazy, somebody needs to see it.
So I'm thinking, training of personnel. 'Cause here is what has to happen if there's an occurrence, which would be documentation.
I guess there's still the question of the things from the CDA policy that we like. Do you want to incorporate them in the existing thirty-three forty-five?
I think we should.
Yeah.
So, I think-
I agree.
This, I'm just gonna highlight what we like, what we like. We need to find out if this actually is a, is a thing.
I think that question was brought up earlier, and I think some schools do and some don't.
Let's see, that's not... It's a uniform.
It should be. I don't think it currently is.
So yeah, I, I guess we need Lynn's input, or Lisa's, on this, all this training information.
Yeah.
Is it just CPI?
Well, that's all our policy states.
Okay.
And what does CPI involve?
Yeah.
Exactly what it involves.
Because if it is inclusive of what this is saying, then, um, we need to, I wouldn't, I would be more in favor of becoming more detailed within the policy, and then not having the procedure, because the, it's, the policy just sort of delineates-
Right, it flows into the policy if your documents is better, I think.
Yeah. So, 'cause I think once all the stuff that was struck out is removed, we're gonna be down to like a page and a half, which is fine, 'cause parents-
Which is already a non-procedural version.
Right. Parents don't like multiple pages. Um, but at least if it's there, and it's for everyone to see, I think it's safer for the kiddos and for the staff and everything like that. So, can you make sure that Lynn or Lisa review our, not ours, the cordillains procedure, the highlighted sections we'd like to incorporate and find out if that language is doable with how they do things, 'cause we don't know.
Right, it has to be doable with the existing training.
Yeah. Okay. So we can move on. Oh, here's, 'cause this is our thingy too, isn't it? Yeah. Which is our form. Oh, we'll be there.
No, this is the form that has to be filled out after that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there was something-
Yeah, that's a good thing to have.
I think that needed to be added, but I'm not sure.
The time and-
And the follow-up?
Oh, date and time. Yeah, time in, time out. Yeah. Okay. So I know that this needs to be, like, spent up. But we need their input, and then we can... If they're like totally cool with it, it can, because it's already gone out for feedback, it can go to the board, and then the board can do its job and to the policy. 'Cause I kind of had a little conversation at the last board meeting, saying we've got to stop shoving it back on Policy Committee, 'cause it's actually the board's job to write the policies.
Right.
And so, they're like, okay.
So bring thirty-three forty-five and thirty-three forty-five P, cordillains version, if everything is in highlighted areas, correct, for, um, input. Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is you need to check with Lynn and Lisa on that. If they feel it could easily be transferred over to the policy,
Okay.
then we need to, we can bring all of that to the board.
Okay.
Along with the ugly P that we have, and let them know we're, we're going to do away with the P, and we're gonna add more language into the policy, and how do they feel about the language?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
'Cause the board can make edits and approve the document in meeting.
Yes, they can. Um, okay. Student health screening, health physical screening. Board, name, range. Okay, so this was the one that we had. Was there any feedback on that one? No, we did get-
On thirty-five hundred?
Yeah. Is that that little one?
Yeah, there's two comments, one person who wants abortion referrals, and one who does not want immunizations on the list of things.
Okay. Which is fine, because we don't offer immunizations at schools.
It was still on the list, though, I think. If services may be provided, or was it?
Well, let's go back up to the top. Look at my screen. Why is that? Oh, that's because that's what's her face, okay.
Yeah, and the language at the top makes it reflex. Well, no, we don't have immunizations, maybe that was it. Oh, no, yeah, it's crossed out the bottom.
Right. 'Cause we don't do immunizations in school. So, not conduct. Frontal consent. Order. Go ahead.
Uh, no, no, I thought, I was gonna quibble on spelling, but it's correct.
Okay, the services being, the development of procedures at each building for the isolation and temporary care of students who can ill. Consulting services of a qualified specialist for staff, students, or parents. Vision and hearing screening, scoliosis screening, impact testing, and mental health services. Okay, um, parents, students shall be notified. Okay. Students who wish to participate in certain, okay, there's that. Parents shall be notified of the district's policy on student health. Okay. Annually... That's kind of redundant, but that's okay. Um, the year. Okay, all employees are prohibited from providing the following services to any student. Transportation to or from an abortion service provider. Forming an abortion, counseling in favor of or abortion or referring for an abortion. What if it's just counseling for abortion, be it in favor or against?
But it's, but it's allowed for this, for this college, right?
Well, what it's saying is counseling against an abortion is okay.
That's true.
But counseling in favor of is not.
Yeah, it's probably better to do both, huh?
I would say yes. Um, counseling, or how about just abortion counseling? Does that, is that clear? If we say abortion counseling?
Yeah, I think that is clear. It's more substantial than for or against.
Or referring for abortion. Okay.
Did the board look at this policy?
Not yet. No, and at the last meeting, um, 'cause Ramona, Ramona had some comments about making sure that the statute was clear within the policy, so we copied and put the statute right there.
You said surveys went out for this?
Yes.
Do they, how do they go out?
I believe it's through a Sky Alert, or is it email?
Sky Alert.
It's a Sky Alert.
Skyward?
Alert. So, so like a ma- a mass email is sent out?
And, but, so I would've got it in Skyward.
Not on your email?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
These things I do not know.
Yeah. Interesting.
So do you have an-
I've never gotten anything for anything.
Does, okay, does the district have your email on s- do you know?
I don't shit, 'cause I have to register my kids every year through Skyward.
Probably goes through junk mail, it always goes to my junk mail. Every single email from the district goes to my junk mail, so I just check it regularly.
Well, yeah, I definitely, for sure, and then, yeah.
I wonder, did, 'cause I'm not tech savvy. So, does it go to the junk mail because of your settings, or does it go to the junk mail because of the district's settings?
Goes to the junk mail because internet, because internet giants like Microsoft and Google are dealing with so much spam.
Okay.
That anything that you like have an email to them, or isn't like an email that, that they're aware of because it's a Gmail email, or it's an Outlook email, basically all goes to spam, like... And it's not just you guys, like every company that emails me.
Right.
You know, like, my engineer, I'm working on a building, and-
So your inbox is really your spam folder?
No, my inbox is like my people I know.
Okay.
And my spam folder is like every business in the world.
Okay, okay.
And I suspect lots of people have that issue. I can't be wrong, I, I would suspect, but, uh-
Yeah.
I'm not the only one here.
Well, yeah, 'cause, well, I get it, but it goes to my district email, so maybe that's like a-
And no, you can set it too, you can be like, I should, I'm going to make this not go to my junk mail. I'm just lazy and haven't done that. Like, it is an option.
Mine, in my email, my Skyward says it's from Lisa Arnold, so-
Lisa Arnold?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I have nothing else to say.
Yeah.
But if not, it's fine, I'll just check with the district and then we'll make sure. Because, yeah, Lisa Arnold does not come out either.
Do you have input that you'd like to share on this policy?
Oh, I just didn't, I mean, I didn't know-
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know, like, all this stuff goes on, so... Yeah, I think. But it's good, yeah, at least they let parents know, but yeah, I feel like, yeah, I don't know if they-
Well, what I kind of hear you saying is-
Let, let people know what's going on any other way, so there's-
These, these meetings are also on YouTube, so like all these meetings are on YouTube, so you can go watch them. I would recommend watching them.
Well, when I, yeah, I went looking for the meetings, and on the calendar it says where it's at. Well, it says what it is, it doesn't say anything else, like open to the public, anybody can come, it doesn't have the address for today's meeting on the calendar, so I-
Really?
just typed in Lakden, Lakeland School District, so... And then I didn't see, like, meeting on the door, so I wasn't even gonna try, 'cause it looked closed.
Right, right.
So then I-
Yeah, the sign says it closes at four, I think.
So, maybe we should put up, that's good input, maybe we should put up, like, on the front door when we're having policy meeting, policy meeting or something.
Are there just scheduled overall meetings? 'Cause there's a lot of meetings on the policy.
Yeah, that occur that nobody is aware of that are going on. But I think what I also hear you saying is, we say all this stuff goes out to parents, but if parents don't know, and they don't know how they're supposed to be getting it, and it's all going to the spam folder, it's just major miscommunication. Major miscommunication.
Oh, definitely, and I'm not getting, yeah, I'm not finding it.
Okay.
So, even in my spam. So, yeah, I would just, you know, double check in the morning. But also, yeah, that's, I mean, it takes two, so.
Yeah, it does, thank you for saying that, but yeah, it's, if we're not.
So, yeah, if we're not, and yeah, that is how technology works, everything mostly goes to the spam folder, so. It just seems like this, you know, it's how all government is working, they're just sneaking stuff by, and do I like that? No, I absolutely don't.
Right.
So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I would not want something like this snuck, I don't have girls.
Mm-hmm.
But I would not want this snuck by me.
I hear you, and I mean, a lot of our policies are very old and outdated, so we're trying to.
Yeah.
Rapidly bring them current, which is as slow as molasses, but we're doing the best we can.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, thank you for that input, I really appreciate that.
I wasn't, yeah, sure, what exactly, like I said, there's no information, I wasn't sure what policy meeting. All it says is policy meeting and the time and that's it.
And where did you see that, on the website?
I went to Lakeland School District website.
So maybe we could have them add where the location is as well.
Yeah.
Maybe, like, cause all the meetings are here.
Yeah, but not everybody knows that.
I didn't even know this is where the school district was, honestly, I thought it was just John Brown Elementary, so.
Not a worry. Cause I know there have been times that where you're like, we should move the board meeting. School, when we get a lot of people that show up, so. We should always put an address, we shouldn't just assume everybody knows.
Oh, well, I heard those issues.
Perfect. Okay, so I think we're good for this one to go to the board.
I think so.
Okay. Thirty-five thirty. This is one we have not looked up. This one has not gone out for feedback, this is the suicide policy.
Spring.
Is this one? Twenty-one, twenty-one. So, Lakewood is committed to creating a safe environment so much. Suicide, safety, students, staff, parents. Student staff, parents, patrons.
Shover area.
Student, students, and staff.
But the second sentence is confusing, or the, saying, neither school district nor future, as a duty to warn of the suicidal tendencies of student. Absent the teacher's or school district's knowledge of direct evidence of such suicidal tendencies.
What?
Like, I don't understand that word.
I love paper. I'm not tech savvy, so I like paper.
How old is this policy?
Uh, twenty-eighteen.
So, it's not too bad.
No, this one is better, some of this.
Eleven, sweet scene. Right.
Um, okay. Student or a teacher, duty to warn of the suicidal tendencies of a student, absent the teacher's or school district's knowledge. Of direct evidence of such suicidal.
I feel like this is designed to clear employees of liability, in case they like knew something, but they weren't sure or something, so they didn't say anything. I feel like that could be said in a more clear fashion, cause.
Yeah.
They're generally not liable, I believe. Maybe they are, okay.
I think there's case law that states, like if you know.
Right.
Someone's like going, but I think that's not with suicide, it's with murder, like if you know someone's gonna go after someone. You have a duty to warn, required and obligated to warn.
Right.
But I, but I think it also goes if you know, if you have insight that someone's gonna harm themselves.
Right.
You need to step in and say no.
I think referring to case law might be the thing to do to clarify that then.
Yeah, but was it, where was it, it was. Oh, wasn't it this one? Just have the statute on there. Cause yeah, we're not allowed to withhold that information from parents, if they suspect, I mean, if there's cause.
There's cause to suspect, yeah.
Yeah. But then again.
Olivia, could you print that one out, can I get a, a written copy of the, of thirty-five thirty? Oh, you did, ha, ha, ha.
So you guys just work on the policies and then you present them to the board to be voted on?
Well.
The board discusses them.
Yeah, what happens is the committee does its work, and then we send it out to the parents and we say, please provide us with your feedback. So then the feedback comes back to the committee, the committee looks at the comments, because a lot of times parents are like, this is confusing, so then we reword it. Um. We do that, and then we send it to the board of trustees. And the board then reviews the policy and makes whatever changes they feel is necessary for the district. And then it becomes the policy of the district, once they vote on it. So it's kind of a multi-stepped process. Um, but ultimately, the board of trustees are the ones that create the policy for the district, that's their job, that's pretty much its job.
That's the main job.
Yeah, that's the main job. Um. So that is kind of how the process works.
So then these are already voted on, you're just like, were you?
Well, this policy, thirty-five thirty, was adopted in two thousand and seven, and then it was revised in two thousand and eighteen. Um, we're supposed to revisit the, the policies anytime there's a change in statute or anything of that nature. Um, a lot of these policies been neglected and that hasn't happened, so because this was done in twenty eighteen, and I think, um. The thirty-three one thirty-six, six thousand and one, and then these IDAPA codes. They've all, they have all influenced this policy now, so that's why it has to be revisited.
So it was voted on last in twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
And then, so you look at what other schools are doing with their policies and then you kinda go off that, or?
No, we read, we, the.
Sometimes.
It's, I mean, our policies need to govern our district, we are not Court of Lane, we are not Post Falls. However, sometimes those districts, though they're bigger, they have received different insights. And instead of reinventing the wheel, we'll see what they have and kind of modify it to meet our parents' needs. And make sure we're not, you know, doing something we shouldn't, but. Yeah, so we do look at other schools and what they have. And we've actually, I mean, not even just in Idaho, cause we've adopted, well, adopt is not the right word. We've utilized language and format from like, uh, school district in Texas. Because they had some pretty concise language, but that was actually for the trustees and their, uh, code of ethics. That we were like, wait a minute, these need to be cleaned up, so we did, but, um, yeah, and if you have insight.
No, I mean, yeah, cause everything comes down to wording.
Yes.
For legalities, like you said, covered.
Words matter.
Yeah.
Big time. Let's pull up this thirty-three one thirty-six. Oopsies. So I think it's that four A, why that statement's in there. It's poorly worded, but.
Oops.
Well.
So that definition needs to include it.
It does. Was this on there, thirty-three five one two B? No, my honorary policy, no, I am not.
Whatever.
Okay, there we are. Oh, it is.
There it is, yep.
Okay, so why, huh, why do I do that? Okay.
Maybe we should copy this directly into the policy? Is it too long?
Hmm. Well, let's go here.
It gets more authoritative, but I don't know, it is longer. But what's there is also.
Whoa, there's a lot here.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Okay. Oh, let's not do that, that's, oh. Okay. Okay. And, okay. Okay.
So that would replace the first paragraph.
Well, this is. Um.
Or sorry, second paragraph, not, not the paragraph in bold.
Right. But I just think the whole statement in and of itself is conflicting. Well, the district has a, because it says, well, we're saying we have a responsibility, we're saying we don't.
Right. We're disclaiming responsibility except in specific situations?
Um.
And that's what the law is, so.
It is, um, so. But I, I, I want, I wanna word it to where it's not quite so offensive.
Right.
It just doesn't seem right, um.
So, why the district, cause what that paragraph that your cursor's on right now is saying is exactly what thirty-three five twelve B is saying, just in fewer words. And I would say with less clarity.
Okay, so. What if?
Fewer words, good, less clarity, bad.
Okay, so the district has the responsibility, instead of taking up, is, let's end it here. And we'll go here. Wait, I'll control. So the district has the responsibility to notify students, parent, guardian regarding any known changes in the student's mental, physical or emotional health or well-being. Period. However, I don't like blue.
Or maybe instead of having the whole section there, we could just reference it. Uh, I don't know. Cause who is actually gonna look up that reference?
Right.
It's like the Apple Terms of Service. Yeah, they did copy that line up straight out of.
They did.
Yeah, which is good.
And I could copy and paste, but you know, we like to listen and type. Duty to warn.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
Definitely an improvement.
Cause that's really what it's saying, is if they don't have direct evidence.
Right, I don't know how to make that better without a ball of text, like, nobody's gonna read.
So. And I get it, I would much rather cite the statute, but I think the statute is more confusing.
Legally, yeah, maybe it is. I've seen worse statutes, though.
Oh, yeah, and which in and itself is, if true, conclusively establishes the fact. Unequivocal and unambiguous oral or written statements by students.
Five dollar word.
Which would not cause a reasonable teacher to speculate regarding the existence of the fact in question. My heaven.
There should be a generally, a general lawyerly policy of minimizing the number of five dollar words in a paragraph.
Yeah. Besides that, it'd have to go to court anyway, so, um, all right.
So then we cross out what's in black underneath that.
Yeah. Take here. Okay. Um, okay, and then we can take this out. Cause, you know.
Yep.
There we go. Okay, the board directs the superintendent. To draft and implement procedures relating to suicide prevention, suicide intervention and suicide postvention. Okay, postvention shall mean counseling or other social care given to students, did it say social care? Where is postvention? It was talked about it.
Yeah, it was. Counseling or other social care.
Yeah, okay. Lord. Why are we doing this? To students after another student's suicide or attempted suicide, okay. Okay, so postvention is, okay, for the other students, okay. The district will. Oopsies. Shall in its own discretion offer the following services, programs to provide proactive suicide awareness, education and prevention for our students. These procedures may include, but are not limited to the following measures. Prevention, offering and providing. Prevention, offering and providing help and assistance. Utilizing the utilization of the district-approved suicide risk assessment protocol. Support under counseling by school support personnel for low-risk students.
Wait, what is, what is a low-risk student? Does that mean everyone? Like, what does that mean?
I don't know, because we apparently have high-risk students.
Yes.
So it would be those that are not of high risk.
Well, they define, they use the term moderate risk here.
Do they?
Yeah, they do, for high and moderate risk students. Do they define these terms? They do not. Does the law define those terms? I, I doubt that it does.
Let's, let's go to, uh, this is chapter thirty-three, chapter thirty-one, chapter one. Um. Doctor Bazar.
Yeah, I think all of the, most of these, like, A through J, whatever, are. Poorly defined. I'll show them.
I wonder if it's in IDAPA.
Uh, if it's IDAPA language.
Oh, look, they have a suicide prevention manual. I wonder if they show who, where they got their definition from. Oh, my heaven. Which I've seen. Okay, so they're using the Columbia scale. Okay. Where are they getting their definition from? Resource those. We need to find out what ours, because I know we have something, it's an employee thing, and so we've never.
Oh, there's some definitions here.
This is twenty nineteen.
Sixty-five.
Well, we could always just do what we do and create our definitions. Um.
I feel like that's gonna be harder in this case.
Oh, yeah.
Can we go back to the page that has like the color-coded table?
I don't know.
Yeah.
So is this a? I can't scroll that long. It's not, it's, I don't want. Yeah, okay, definitely.
Where did we see? Let's see.
I actually like, D would have good answers issues here.
Right, oh, right here, in the very first page, okay. So there's at-risk. It's high risk. So we're not offering definitions for these.
Could change it to at-risk. At-risk, not at-risk.
Because I honestly don't think that any teacher should be determining if a student's high, medium, or low. If they fear that the student's at-risk, regardless of where they fall.
Right.
They should be seeking to help that student.
Right.
I mean, because to me, that's a lot of pressure on a teacher to be like, go down your list, and if, you know.
Yeah, can teachers really assess?
If you get a tingly feeling.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And assess with that level of feeling and regularity.
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it'd be interesting to see if the CPI training includes anything, includes definitions like that, or.
Yeah, I don't know.
Really?
Without one here. Are you playing Solitaire?
No, no, I'm on a wish.
Just kidding.
I was looking to see if I could find the, something on that suicide.
It's bingo cash, right?
Yeah, I want all the money.
Yeah, there you go. Referral to appropriate sources outside of school.
You guys have any comments on this?
Yeah, I agree. Just leave it at at-risk.
Okay.
And then I think a teacher shouldn't honestly be able to determine high or low. They're not counselors.
They're not trained or qualified, no.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and any risk is not a good risk, so.
Any risk is enough to pay attention to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sources outside the school for high, um. If there's concern that we think there's a risk, they should have the right to be referred for services. It doesn't mean they're gonna go utilize them.
Right.
But we should be offering them.
Right.
Tending to the rights of the students and his or her family. What does that mean?
I don't know. In fact, my answer is, I don't know to a large point, it's like, what is, what is unclear language, attending to the rights. And. I don't know if that needs to be there.
We don't have a suicide prevention coordinator that I'm aware of. Um, for planning and coordinating the implementation of procedures addressing suicide. I don't think we have that. Um, encouraging staff to report to the coordinator students they may, they believe may be at elevated risk of suicide. Education of students in suicide prevention through each appropriate curriculum. Small group suicide prevention programming. Offering sources to parents and guardians on suicide prevention. Okay, intervention. Contacting the parents and guardians of students identified at, as at imminent risk. Contacting emergency services to assist a student who is at imminent risk.
So, parent guardians, should we change that to just at-risk?
Right here.
Yep. Instead of imminent risk, just at-risk, like, if my kid is at risk, I definitely want to know.
Right.
Um. Pardon? It doesn't need to rise to the level of imminent risk, just any kind of risk?
Contacting emergency services to assist a student. I don't like that one. Contacting emergency services to assist a student who is at imminent risk of suicide. What does that mean?
Call nine-one-one if they're.
Trying to hurt themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, the phrase LT is awkward, I don't agree with that. Maybe contacting emergency services in the case that a student. In the case of an in, of an imminent risk to a student.
Contacting emergency services if a student is at imminent risk of suicide?
That's better.
Because I mean, if.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
Because you're gonna call nine-one-one. I just, to assist them, that just doesn't work for me. Providing first aid until emergency personnel arrives as appropriate. Would there be first aid that's not appropriate?
Yeah, to what degree, you know, are employees able to provide first aid?
I don't know. Well.
I mean, they're gonna do what they can, regardless of what this policy says, one would hope.
I would hope, yes. Providing first aid until emergency services, emergency personnel arrive.
Yeah, do we need it as appropriate, yeah?
I just don't know what that means.
Right.
Moving other students away from the imminent, immediate area of any suicide attempt on district property or at a district event. Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Um, post-vention, after-care support by the school for faculty, staff, and students after a sudden death has occurred. Okay, the development of a plan for responding to a death by suicide that has a significant impact on the school community. Notification of the suicide prevention coordinator if applicable. You know, I don't think we have one of those. The creation of a crisis team to respond to deaths by suicide that have a significant impact. Oh, that's, okay, mm.
How do you, how, how does a death by suicide not have a significant impact, the development plan?
What's that?
How does a death by suicide not have a significant impact on a school community? Is that possible?
Very true, yeah.
And then it, yeah. In B as well, they, they have the same caveat of significant impact on the school community?
I really don't think we have a suicide prevention coordinator.
Without a coordinator, we probably don't have a crisis team either.
No.
This is.
But I know.
For Lisa, really?
Yeah, it is. Because I know, and the thing is, is we do provide support when there's just any type of catastrophe that's gonna affect students. I mean, suicide is significant, but there are other events.
Right.
That warrant making sure we have support services for kids at school.
Appointing a spokesperson. To handle inquiries. Gosh, there's a fun job.
Offering mental health services to students likely to be strongly affected.
Yeah, that's pretty, wishy-washy language, huh? Offering to students that are affected, or something like that. Or students that have been.
I don't know that we. Have a spokesperson.
I kinda assume that's the superintendent. Who else would, maybe not?
Well, well, see, before Lisa was the superintendent, she actually was.
Okay.
No, it was the clerk, Christie. She was the communication liaison between the district and the media.
Wow.
Yeah.
So maybe he gets a raise.
Okay, but then I have to talk to the media. Gosh.
Um. But I would think that should come from the superintendent, especially when we're dealing with student suicide.
The kid that has a plaque at Majestic Park. I heard that, but he died from suicide.
Do you know the student's name?
I don't remember, but there's a, yeah, plaque at Majestic, so I'm just wondering how that was handled.
I don't know.
Like, it must have been handled, could, and impacted the community if he has a plaque at the park.
Right.
Right, we have lost a few students to suicide. Um, and it has impacted the students, I mean, because they were someone's friend.
And it's such a small town.
It is, it's a small community. And it, the wave of emotion is quite powerful, so, um, I'm wondering who that was. Because I've not seen it. Have you seen it at Majestic Park? I'm wondering who that was.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think before I got on the board. There had been two or three within like a two or three year span right before I got on the board. Um. But there was, we've. The district, uh, was used by Real Life Ministries to prepare a suicide awareness film.
Oh, I think I remember.
Do you remember that? Yeah, and that was. Pretty powerful, because some parents don't feel, some parents were not against suicide prevention, they were against using the district and the students that had been impacted by the prior deaths. They felt that was in romp or taste. Um, but we remember different leadership and a different board at that time, and that's what they did, so. Um. So I know that we've, the district's taken a, tried to take a proactive approach. Um, if it's been received that way, I, you know, I don't know, but. Following notification of district staff of a suicide attempt by a student or following the identification of a student as being at imminent risk of suicide, the building principal may require a note. From the student's doctor or counselor stating that it is in the doctor or counselor's opinion. That the student is ready to return to school. The student and their parent may meet with the school counselor or physician. To create a plan for the student's return to school, including any appropriate accommodations needed for the student.
Should we highlight G, uh, point G above the, the green paragraph to?
As something to look into.
Yeah, as something to ask him about or.
Do we have other things? Do we have other things?
If we have a suicide prevention coordinator or crisis team.
Yeah. Do we not have anything for up here? I just feel like, hmm.
Yeah. I'll tell D she gets five to merits for missing this meeting.
There we go, that's right.
Cause I feel like she would have had a lot of impact.
Just, I don't like. They shouldn't be going to the coordinator, they need to be going to the parents.
Right. Maybe make a note of that, uh, on, on point G there. Uh, what the age is.
It's because I've got fast makers.
Unlike me, my typing skills are abuzz.
Ah, that can't stop. And it's highlighted.
Education of students on suicide prevention. Sorry, can we go back to H at the top there, education of students on suicide prevention through age appropriate curriculum? I don't know, like what age do you wanna be teaching kids suicide prevention, cause that means teaching about suicide, like I don't want.
Yeah, no, I know, and I don't.
I don't want my six-year-old in grade one.
To my knowledge, we don't have a suicide prevention curriculum. That has been approved by the board.
Right.
Um.
Like, I feel like there's a greater risk of suicide contagion below a certain age.
Right, I would agree with that.
Um, then there is a benefit of what that age is, I can tell you, but. That's what I would guess.
I would say puberty.
Yeah, that's probably right.
And for every child, it's different.
Yeah. Right.
It's not all kids say puberty at the same time.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Kind of love hormones.
Junior high, it's enough time.
Yes, yes, it is. I'm gonna highlight this because I don't know what that means. I get what student rights are, family rights, but I don't know what we are doing by attending to them.
Right.
What does that mean? Okay, so we'll cruise back down here, um.
Yeah, such a vagueness in these policies, it makes it easy to interpret it however you want.
Right, so tend to the rights of the students and their family.
Yeah, I, I think the whole thing doesn't need to be there, you know, if they have rights. What does attend to them mean?
I don't know.
Order them, respect them. I think we shouldn't need a policy to say that.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know, I would cross it out. So we can find something more concrete. Trivialize it.
Well, because we're doing it up here. I mean, I'm asking questions about it.
Right.
It's part of prevention, but now we have it under here, which I don't know what this green little paragraph is for.
Right. Yeah, this is one of those policies that means like open heart.
Well, see, all this blue was not in the policy before, it's coming from ISBA.
Okay. Oh, that's IS, that's right.
Yep, it's ISBA language.
That's right.
So how that morphs into our little world, yeah.
How ISBA meant. Five better writers.
We're working on that. Because, I don't know, I just thought, well, because if a child has attempted suicide or made threats of that, and then they have. Gone to either K V H or just saw it services outside of school, and then they're gonna come back to school. I think it's a very private information communication between the student and the principals.
It is, yeah, it is. For the student and their healthcare provider.
Well, but what that little green, green blurb is saying that basically the district wants a note. It's kind of an ins- an insurance that. Little kiddos, okey dokey.
Yeah, we're not gonna do anything crazy at school to disturb the other students.
Right, right. And while I'm not saying that that's not. That it's inappropriate to say, can we get a note from the doctor that we're in a good place now? I just kinda think it's more of a preference on.
Like more of a parent decision?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think it's a requirement that.
Yeah, I agree.
If your kid's gonna go to school, then we need to ensure.
Yeah, if it's not a parent decision, then you're almost assuming that the parent is grossly incompetent in some fashion.
Which can't even happen.
It can't happen, but it's kind of a nasty assumption to make, like, if you make assumptions like that, now you have, now you have five times as many policies.
They make assumptions with that, with regular illness, so I can see why that's in there for mental illness.
For regular illness, like you need a doctor's note to go back to class?
Yeah, they tried to tell me my kid needed a doctor's note to say he doesn't have pink eye.
Okay. Okay.
And I was like, yeah, that's not gonna happen unless you're gonna pay for that doctor bill.
Right, yeah, there's the financial.
So she was like, keep him home, so I kept him home for days, and then she was like, well, he can come back to school now, I'm like, oh, but I didn't get a note.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right at all.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's what they did to me.
So maybe we should take that out, cause that's a bad situation.
Yeah, that's not acceptable.
Yeah, if you're imposing a financial burden on the parent, this is, um. Not a rescue for the best outcome.
Yeah, well, cause, yeah, cause I know for like kiddos to be released from K V H, they have to be released to a counselor. They won't just let them out, um, which is a challenge when there's a shortage. And, you know, there's no reason.
So I think that's there to cover the school once again, like, we want proof your kid is okay to come here. But I think the proof already comes from.
Them coming back.
Yes, the hospital that releases them.
Right.
Gotcha.
District shall comply with all requirements of state law.
It was Yvonne, right?
Yvonne.
Yvonne, do you have experience in this, in this sort of area?
I have five kids, I was medical assistant, but.
Okay, yeah, that counts for something. You're beating me by one.
Wait, you were a medical assistant and they were like, get a note?
I told them, yeah, that this was a beddy keeper, and it was just last year, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Good well.
Well, I was, and I told her, I was like, he, he doesn't have pink eye, he has allergies. And she was like, no, he does, I'm a nurse. I was like, well, you're not a very good one, because everybody else has allergies right now. So, yeah, we went back and forth, and this is, she said he cannot come to school until he gets a note. I said, well, that's not gonna happen unless you're gonna pay the doctor bill, I don't have Medicaid. And so she was like, okay, then, so I kept him home from school, cause I was not going to. I'm, like I said, I have five kids, my oldest is twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So I kept him home, and then after like two days, she, the school called and was like, he can come back to school. I'm like, are you sure? Cause I don't have a note, and they were like, yeah, so.
That's a bad situation, I would complain about that, that's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, I did, I probably should have, but I don't know.
I know that there's protocol that's supposed to be followed for contagious diseases, but if you're assured that it's not contagious.
Mm-hmm.
Then the little guy should have gone to school.
Yeah.
Um, okay, the district shall comply with all requirements of state law and administrative rules for training by personnel on suicide prevention and awareness. This includes providing annual professional development staff involved in preventing, intervening and responding to suicide on. School philosophy regarding school climate and the promotion of protective factors. Data on suicide for the region or state or both. Risk and protective factors for students. Suicide myths and facts. How to develop community partnership to. Related to suicide prevention. How to utilize safe and appropriate language and messaging when addressing students, warning signs of suicide ideation for students. Local and school-based protocols for aiding suicidal. Suicidal individual, local protocols for seeking self, seeking help for self-related students. Identification of appropriate mental health services and community resources for referring students and their families. Information about state statutes on responsibility, liability and duty of war. Confidentiality issues, uh, need to ask others directly if they are suicidal. And evidence-based protocol for responding to a student or staff's suicide. It's a lie, that is a lie. I'm wondering if this has been updated. Suppose I could just put comments, huh, instead of doing all this, but, you know, I'm having much more fun doing it this way.
It's easier to not miss the way we're doing it, comments, I always like, I got in the habit a long time ago of ignoring comments. Cause there's like a million of them on some documents.
Yes, there are, okay, so we have a lot of questions on this, um.
Yeah, we need a lot of additional input on this policy, I think.
Yeah, we do. Okay, so, this won't be going out for comment. This will be going to powers of B, and woman and Lisa and say, what?
Say. I'd send a copy to D, do you want to see what she has to say?
Okay.
Cause, cause she worked in counseling and stuff for a long time.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Send a copy to D?
Yes, please, and just ask for her input. Community use of school facilities, this is, uh.
So we're moving on from thirty, five thirty?
Yeah, cause there's not really, I mean, I mean, unless there's more input than anyone would like to give at the table that we can.
Yeah. Thirty-five thirty, I think it's gonna take a while to get exactly right, cause it's important, it's sensitive.
Yeah. It is.
And there's just a lot to it.
And that, like there is all in the statute, so I get that, but. This other, the other portions that got added, I'm not sure where that's coming from, I'm sure it's from the statute, but.
I hope it's from the statute.
Right, we never know.
Right.
So, yeah. I'm not gonna go on a fishing expedition, so we'll just wait, we'll go to forty-two ten, which is the community use of school facilities. There we go.
Yeah, this one has not drawn out for comments.
No, and it's a short one, it'll be there, okay.
Oh, beautiful.
Right. School facilities are available to the community for education, civic, cultural and other non-commercial uses consistent with the public interest. When such use does not interfere with the school program or school sponsor activities. Such facilities may also be used for the operation of a senior citizen center, oh, I didn't know that.
Isn't that included in use of cultural and other non-commercial uses consistent? Like, we don't need that specifically called out, but cool.
Use of school facilities for school purposes has precedence over all other uses. Persons on school premises must abide by the district's conduct rules at all times. Student and school-related organizations shall be granted the use of school facilities at no cost. School-related organizations.
Yeah, that's a little bit fuzzy.
That is really fuzzy.
Pretty much anything could be school-related.
Mm-hmm.
My kid goes to the school and also is in this group.
Right. Cause I know there have been concerns, um. Because the biggest use of our facilities usually comes from sports programs. And so, some sports teams are required to pay some or not, but yet all the kids.
Yeah.
Go to school and find out about the sport through the school, so is that school-related?
Overlap, yeah. So some pay and some don't?
Yeah, that's been kind of a.
Yeah, that sounds like a hairy situation, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds like a terrible situation.
Right.
What is the criteria, if, is it, if it's a nonprofit sports league, then they don't pay? Cause that would make sense if that was the distinction.
It goes over that in the.
In the procedures document?
Procedures.
Okay. Here we go. Okay, okay. And this is one too, that I would like, um, Jessica's input on. Because Brian, uh, micromanaged the, the school facility use. And I know that about three years ago, the board brought to him the fact that when we were at COVID. Um, this is how we found out a little bit about the sports things, cause when we were at COVID and everything was shut down. Uh, there was a baseball tournament going on, and we were inundated with Washington people, and the community was angry. Why are they allowed here? And we're shut down.
Monitors, yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, cause they couldn't practice over, they couldn't do anything over Washington, so they came here.
It was a fun situation.
So, yeah, so we were trying to get a better handle and.
Didn't pay.
I have no idea, I don't think they did, because that was through baseball, and it. It's just been very muddy for a long time, so we need clear blue water, all seater.
And I was gonna say, this whole policy looks pretty good to me, but maybe we need to be more specific.
Well.
Or maybe it's just the procedures document that needs to be clarified if.
That could be, so.
I don't think I have any issues with the.
Finally, shall comply with policies of this board. It'll be there, all individuals using school facilities shall comply with. Okay.
Here we go. Here we go. Here we go.
There we go. Alright, um.
This board, something like a period.
Right, yeah. I was just thinking, we're not gonna change anything on this, but looky there. Okay, um, so, okay, the reason that the whole comment about senior centers is because there's statute for it.
So that's why it gets a special call up?
Yep, okay. So if school facilities are available for civic. Wonder what that means.
Hopefully it's defined in the procedures document.
Let's pop over here. Priority for use. Facilities are for community use according to the priorities established by the school board. Entities persons. Governmental entities with whom the district has entered into a written contract. I E joint powers agreement? What is that?
Joint powers, sounds like international, uh, political office. It's a NATO document.
School related groups and organizations within the district that have organized. I know, time is slowly chicken. Chartered youth groups. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Camp Fair Girls, four each. Youth commissions, youth support groups, et cetera. Local youth athletic teams with seventy five percent to one hundred percent Lakeland School District students. A player roster must be submitted for verification, local community organization groups. And civic service organizations for activities that directly benefit the school, district students and our local community. Groups, citizen concerning groups, political caucuses. Oh, polling places. Rotary Alliance, Columbus, Community Development Groups, Local Community Embracers. Category three. City, county or other public agencies with whom the district has not entered into a joint powers agreement. So up here, it's an I E, down here, it is what it is. So which is it? Universities, colleges, community educations, classes. And activities. Evening degree programs. Youth athletic teams with less than seventy five percent. AAU teams, club sports, post, falls, park and rec teams.
Sports.
Okay, why don't we get, why don't we add rathrum? I mean, or why don't we just say park and rec teams?
Or outside the district, or teams originating outside the district. Teams based outside the district.
Well, up here though, under the sports teams. Local youth athletic teams. So I guess that would include the park and rec.
But it's based in Lakeland School District too.
Okay, so.
Yeah. I think that's good.
Should we state out of district, park and recreational teams?
I think so.
Ten, can't spell, good, okay. Authorized adult recreational clubs and teams. Other nonprofit groups. And special organizations. Non-district fee based events.
So maybe it'll say later, but I think category four is the category that must pay fees. I don't know if it's specifically stated later, but I.
Yeah, there's a P chart.
Oh, there is? Okay.
And it's pretty outdated.
There you go.
Events. Sports recitals, lectures, sports musical entertainment. Profit making activities. Religious organizations for religious services or other church related activities. Non-school sports camps.
These are, uh, some bargain fees. I think I might rent a high school for a birthday party.
We've tried to raise them. That's why I think Jessica should weigh in. Cause we got our hands slapped.
Really? By who?
The prior CFO.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Approval for the use of facilities must be obtained from the.
So, wow, I can rent a soccer field for ten bucks an hour? An elementary soccer field. Alright, so I know this is an open meeting, but you guys are not allowed to advertise the prices here. So that I can book all the.
No facilities agreement may extend beyond the court. It's going here.
I'm pretty sure my wife would book a tennis court for ten bucks an hour.
Any person agreed other than official school activities of governmental entities with whom the district has a joint powers agreement. Okay, so I'm gonna get some strychnine nuts. Cause we keep going to it and all we hear is an I E. Strychnine nuts. Things I get caught up in.
It's just pleasing to see good English language skills on official documents.
Right. Must complete if facility, okay, be using, before using any of the district's facilities forms are available on the district website. There are no exceptions to the written application process. All fees, including key deposits, including key deposit if applicable. Must be submitted before the application will be approved. Payments must be made in no less than ten business days prior to rental. If additional charges are levied by the school or district, they are due within ten days of being invoiced. For groups renting on an ongoing basis, payment for the first month is due within ten days for the first month of use and monthly in advance of the use thereafter. Yoke yoke. Applicant, all applicants for use of school facilities will hold the district free and without harm. From any loss or damage, liability or expense that may arise during or be caused. By which is the occupancy of school. Okay.
Can we make a note to define local? Cause the word local is used a lot. I think we need to define that.
Okay. So up here. Oh, do we have definitions anywhere? Is that the only thing we need to define?
Um, probably not. Um, but, uh.
We keep flopping into categories.
No, I don't believe, no, there's no definition section. Other than definitions of the categories.
Should she just put rathrum or rathrum slash grants?
For local, I'd put in district, I think. Yeah.
In district, yeah, in district.
Right, it's like a house or.
Or maybe we should just replace the word local with in district then.
Yeah.
It's used, okay. Although the word means.
That, that's, that's appropriate. That's an appropriate use of local.
That's good. Okay, uh.
Yeah, those two, in district.
Sorry, could you move? Okay, so that's all of them. Perfect.
Beautiful.
Alright, so shall provide a policy of public liability insurance for personal injury and property damage. With the district name as an additional insured in excess of not less than one million dollars.
Maybe that's gonna put a kibosh on my tennis court rental.
Keys, key cards, codes, buildings unlocked, wheels that be used. Then a little brighter to be sure it's not a key, key card, district must receive. Key and key cards must be insured. All meetings shall close in sufficient time to clear the building. Okay. Let's not talk about the board meetings. Yeah, all meetings shall end in sufficient time. Yeah. That goes beyond the time designated in the facility use agreement, additional charges are fine. Okay. Well, now we're calling them L C's. We don't call them that anywhere else.
Such a fun word though.
It is.
Applicant?
Yep.
I do see an argument for L C there.
What's that?
I do see an ar- an argument for L C there, cause in this bullet point, it assumes that they haven't just applied, but they have received. Approval to function.
Do we have the application? Wait, isn't it down here? Maybe it was like a high level or something? Well, blue is all.
I don't think there is an application. Blue is.
Is that, is it on, look what you think? Fee schedule.
Oh, it's a different document.
So why do we have these F one, F two, F threes? Cause they're all, do we have F one, F twos, F three? Do we have all these forms?
No.
Okay.
Her policy, no. Her policy, no.
Oh, yeah, I guess if I could read, that would help. Okay.
But that does make the question, why is there an olive? The answer is not.
So we can see what ISBA is suggesting. Just curious, what is their fee schedule like? Oh, they don't give us any prices. Alright.
I mean, if the entity is carrying a million dollars in life, they have insurance, insurance, they can probably afford more than ten dollars an hour.
Well, maybe we need to take our fee schedule and put it in its own little world.
That's probably a good idea, so it can be updated independently.
Yes, exactly.
I think that's a good idea. It's a good one.
Um, but what was that for?
The application.
Yeah, the application for.
I think it's F three.
F three?
Yes.
The facilities agreement.
No, what I was asking is do we have one?
No.
We, no. Well, I know we have an application. I think it's on the website.
Okay.
Let's see here, where's that? Policy is that forty two? Don't keep clicking. I know we have an application, where is it?
There it is.
Where is that? Under district facility. Okay, so it's under the district page.
Online.
Right. Oh, that's, yeah, this needs to change, in my opinion. Jessica should weigh in on this.
Who's Jessica?
She is the new CFO.
Oh, she is, okay.
Look at this lovely calendar. That's a lot of color. Um, is there anywhere that doesn't have like ten or more? Okay, so say I wanna reserve it. Why is it just giving me, oh, new request? Yeah, cause you have to, you have to do all this. Yeah, I wanna see the form.
Is there an, it looks to me like there's no, it's just online.
Cause you have to register for a new account and then you submit the request. Submitting a facilities use request.
Welcome to M L schedules. This video will review how to submit a request.
Okay.
Such lovely.
In order to begin the request process, you can either select the new request button at the top of the page. Or if you go to the date of the event and you select that date, that will also allow you to begin the request process. Next, you will enter the location information of the request. You'll start by selecting the site. So let's say I want to use the high school, and then you'll select a space. You are able to enter multiple spaces within the dropdown if the event requires the use of more than one facility. Next, you'll select the frequency. The form will default to a one-time event. However, you are able to adjust the frequency of that event if it needs to occur on more than one date. So I'd say it was multiple days per week, and it was every Monday and Wednesday. Next, you'll enter the start and end date of the request, as well as a start time and end time. So I'd say it's going to be every Monday and Wednesday from three until five o'clock. Next, select the view availability button. This will show you all the dates and times that you requested, as well as if those dates and times are available. You can see here that May twenty fifth is showing in red, meaning that it's not available. In that situation, you can either remove the date by selecting the X button. Or you can also adjust the date, start time and end time from this view. And as you make those adjustments, the system will automatically check availability for you. Selecting the continue button will allow you to enter any additional information regarding the event. You may see a view photos button, which will allow you to see images of that facility, as well as any notes regarding the use of that facility. Down below, you can fill in any additional information, such as the event title and any equipment or personnel needed for the event. You're also able to pump additional attachments, such as a diagram of how you want the room set up. At the bottom, you'll have to check off that you have agreed to the district's policies, and they may require you to, like, try and be signed for that request as well. For internal staff members, the button at the bottom of the page will simply say confirm submitting request, which will begin the approval process. But for outside groups, the district may require you to view your estimated cost and agree to the cost before finalizing your request. Once the continue the estimated cost button is selected, you'll be given a summary of the fees associated with your request. Once you agree to the estimated cost, you'll be able to submit the request. That will begin the approval process, and you'll be notified once your request is either approved or declined. Thanks for watching.
You're welcome. Okay, so there is no. It's just a.
Online form.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we were gonna get to watch a movie during this meeting.
It's a special meeting. So there is no application, it's just.
So the policy should state that it's online.
Yeah.
Um, and give it URL, and maybe a QR code if you're feeling fancy.
So once that's submitted, is it, somebody approves it?
Is, is my understanding, there was an application.
Cause it didn't say like you will be notified within.
Correct, but, but that wasn't our video, that was whatever this program is, that's there.
This is all for, for others' video, yeah.
So, there is no application, it's just a find your date and submit. Um, but I know the old CFO. He was the overseer of all, so, um.
So can we go back to the base forty-two ten policy? And add a link? And note that it is online?
Well, I'm just wondering. Well, that's interesting, cause I don't find the word application in here anywhere.
We should probably add it, there.
So there is no application, but on the procedures one, it's screaming about the application all over the place. So that's not good, um, okay, so.
I think after the first paragraph is the place to. You are, you may apply online or at.
Um, okay, so. How about down here at your authorization?
Yeah. That works too.
But see, the administration doesn't, they approve it, but they don't schedule it, you're doing that.
Guess, man, I thought this document was gonna be almost untouched, I guess we're gonna have to hard it up.
Shall not be considered in the first paragraph.
Any more, add?
Add.
I can just copy paste the URL.
This one, is that the right one?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you wanna link directly to the button that takes you to the application.
This is like way over my pay grade here, I, we're lucky if I can link in something.
If you're new to it, you have to register first.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Or if you're not, then you just log on, so.
There we go, and it's blue.
Beautiful.
It's white, okay. Alright. I'm wondering, is there a, a master schedule in the office?
I have no idea.
Master schedule's online.
Right, that's what I was.
Yeah.
So. Oopsies, no, that's not what I want, let me go back. Alright, um, register, login, where did we see, oh.
Click here to view. No, here, you can probably make direct link of that.
But will it always only take them to September?
Um.
Cause I, I do that to myself all the time, I'm like, that's not what I wanted.
Last bit of the URL will tell you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
P equals one, V equals C. That's page equals one. I'll have to check next month, see if it's.
It changed?
I suspect that it's sticky and won't be the current month.
Okay.
You can email the company, they'll just bring this up and they'll tell you.
So, uh. Okay, so how about if I just do this, and we will, oops. Um, go unyellow that. Under. Oopsies, lucky there.
Yeah, then we can probably cross out first. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Be nice to keep the policy to nice one pager.
Right. Well, I know, um, wait, maybe I could do this, let's see here. I know how to do it in Word, I don't know how to do it here where we, oh, insert link.
Yeah.
See. Apply. That looks so much nicer than that.
It's true, but it doesn't work if it's for the printed version.
Oh. I did it.
Yeah.
Some smart stuff, please. Should we hyperlink it here too?
I think it's good to have it spelled out somewhere.
Okay, alright. Oh, we could also link it there.
Yeah, you can do both.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling pretty, you know, intelligent tonight.
But doesn't it get easier to do that?
Probably, but you know, I live in a land of confusion.
I think at should be included in the hyperlink.
Alright. Oopsies. Insert. Where's the little paperclip, do you see the paperclip?
Scroll down.
Well, there we go.
Ta-da.
Just getting the hang of things. Can teach an old dog new tricks, um, okay, so.
Alright.
Okay, yeah, so that policy is okay, good to go, I guess.
I think so, I think so, I love, yeah, there's the procedures part, but yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have to tackle those procedures, okay?
Yep.
So, it is now eight o'clock, and we are gonna end this.